All right. I'll call to order the September 22 meeting of the Eastham Select Board. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local channel eight and through the town website at www dot eastham hyphen ma dot gov. All right, so the first thing, of course, has to be my joke, right? All right. Have you heard, have you heard the story of the mathematician, probably a finance director, who despised negative numbers? He stopped at nothing to avoid them. Okay, next we go. Hey, I got some odds instead of groans. All right. That's a bad like Jackie, you don't like any of them. That's okay. All right. Uh. Information that's not on the agenda. First, anything from the Select Board? Bob?
Yeah, I just thought I'd give you guys a quick update.
Is it on?
Yes.
I think so. I spoke with Frank Dobek, the FE president. Thank you, Erica, for his contact information. And we're planning a luncheon, a simple luncheon in at the library, probably October 27th, which is a Monday for about 50 or 60 people. So I wanted to make sure you knew that was coming from the Select Board. Certainly not anybody personally. Kind of like what Art did. I was, I got a chance to see the invitation Art sent, which I thought was really nice. So here we are again, two years later. October 27th is not cast in stone, but it looks pretty good so far.
Right, thank you. I mean, anyone else? All right, so anyone in the audience here or online has anything that they would like to raise before the Select Board that is not, that is not on the agenda? Go ahead, please.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mike Sarsone. The Terrapin was installed today at the library. So everyone stopped by to see the Casperon sculpture that the guy who put it is glad.
Oh. All right. All right, thank you.
Nice.
That's wonderful. All right, any, anything else? Well, we'll go, I'm going to make a slight change on the agenda. We're going to first hear from our town moderator concerning the, his appointment to the Search Committee. Scott.
Hi, good evening. Is that on?
I don't know. I don't think so.
It's a little green light on, on the base of it.
No, I don't know if it's on there.
Not see a green light.
Why don't you try over here then?
Change of ending.
You get, you can, you can sit now.
I can definitely see a green light here, and I feel bad. Everyone's back to me, but as a town moderator, it is my pleasure and duty to make appointments occasionally on a few of the committees. So the moderator does have an appointment availability on the Search Committee. And I'm very pleased to appoint Julie Littman to the Search Committee. Kate Paradise has done an incredible job of vetting Ms. Littman, and her qualifications seem to be impeccable, and she is very excited to join the committee. And I think there'll be a, I think people probably know of her. I think the assistant fire chief and Ms. Littman are friends, very good friends, I think. So anyways, so I'm excited to make that appointment and enjoying being the moderator. And if anybody has any questions or.
No, I think is she, Julie, is she back there in the, in the back?
Being pointed at by.
All right. There she is. Thank you for joining the Search Committee. One of the two, one of the two committees I would not want to be a member of. But I, I thank you very much for, for being willing to serve. Thank you, Scott.
And I would be remiss if I didn't invite others watching at home. I'm certain that we have other committees where there are openings. So continue to ask people to get involved as their civic duty to our town.
We have no sound? Okay. We will.
Well, that's certainly out of my pay grade, but.
Above your, above my pay grade too, you know?
Well, wishing everybody a nice evening. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. We'll, we'll pause for a moment while we see if we can take care of technical difficulties here.
Thanks, Jackie. I'm glad she wrote you too, because. Is it all sound?
All sound, they have no sound in there. So I don't know if the recording has sound or not either. Let's make sure we get it right.
That Jeopardy music again.
That's.
Always one step behind.
Did good.
No.
Sound presentation.
That one sounded more on.
Sound in general in the online.
So let us know when you.
Yeah. Is she, is it, how does she watch? Does she?
No, no, it's not TV, YouTube.
Okay, so no sound to YouTube.
No.
That helps.
Public, yeah.
Yeah.
She's, she's typing, she's typing.
There could be sounds.
No. Sound.
Okay.
I just typed, let us know when you can hear.
When you can hear, hear us babbling here.
But likely there's sound on Zoom.
Right, or Zoom, yeah.
Maybe, well, there's just.
Do we have anyone on Zoom we can ask?
Oh, yes, yes, sound on eight, says Debbie Abbott.
Yes, sound on channel eight.
So it's YouTube.
It's just YouTube. We have sound on channel eight, Rich.
But not YouTube.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the public figured it out first.
Is there the computers up? Okay, we're on, all right. Channel eight has sound, so I think we can move ahead as we have quite a few people here. And let's.
Can I add something?
Yes, you may.
Um, I was going to mention that the Assembly of Delegates is having a public hearing on the, a regional luxury real estate transfer fee from four to six P M. And that's the Barnstable Assembly of Delegates about a regional real estate transfer fee. And we've discussed it. We had a home rule petition that we sent to the state, and they are currently in discussion about maybe pursuing one at the county level. And so if people have comments or want to, yeah, if people have comments, if people want to give comments, you can join their meeting and you would Google Assembly of Delegates and find their meeting information that way.
All right, well, thank you. We went, Amy and I and Rich were at a meeting with the county administrator. And the real estate fees is basically the major source of revenue for the, for the county. So anyway, all right, on to our regular agenda. Well, the Climate Action Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know that
Pardon?
The sound is on this channel, and I got a text and I tested ourselves on YouTube and the sound on YouTube. So if anyone's experiencing a problem, maybe it's.
Their own. Okay, we're all good. All right. All right, Tom?
Good evening, thank you. And I hesitate to ask what is the second committee you don't want to be on?
No, I won't, I won't say, I won't say that at the moment.
Well, thank you for giving us time on the agenda tonight. And thank you to Erica for doing a quick update for the board packet this morning. And apologies to the board for that glitch that the presentation didn't get in during the weekend release. We found the glitch and we were correcting it. So if we could bring up the slides. I'll just mention that as we get that going, the, let's go to the next page when you can. So this is both the annual update that we're required to give as part of our charter, our charge, but also important to, what we want to do is select guidance on a couple of upcoming items. No votes being requested tonight, but there are a couple of items that set us up for some very good opportunities that we want to make you aware of and the steps that are needed that the state is requesting of the Select Board to get us there. So next slide, please. I'm not going to go through this slide. I'll just say that I'm very proud of the committee members. And we took on the extra energy piece this year. We have seven very strong and dedicated members and another four, five ad hoc volunteers, I guess we call it. And despite the three of us being engineers, you know, we've made a lot of progress. You know what they say about engineers and light bulbs, right? Takes one to calculate the turning force, the second to test it out thoroughly, and then the third to thoroughly document that new standard. So anyway, the, a piece of what we're doing today is, is the, the energy side, the green community side. But I also want to point out that we've added adaptation, which is really working in the community to help guide what we should all be doing with the change in climate and hazards that are coming upon us that we've seen across the country and that are likely to come next. So some really good work there, and we do have a rep on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I thank Paul for, I saw Paul around here somewhere. I thank Paul for, for tying us into that. The next chart, please. So the significant opportunity we have is in the green communities area. We've been a member, an awardee since 2021, and that got us to the, what's called the designation grant, the $139,000 grant. And kudos to Rich and his team and the DPW for closing that grant out this year. The Fire Department HVAC was funded through that, and it leveraged that $139,000 and made it $400,000, no cost to the taxpayer. So big kudos to, to what was done there. The, and that is resulting in savings in annual operations costs of $25,000 a year and a reduction of 52 tons per year of fossil fuel emissions. So a really great, really great effort. The Climate Leaders Program is the, the next iteration of green communities. The state is pivoting a little bit and doing more than just a energy efficiency focus. Now they're looking at an environmental focus and a greenhouse gas reduction focus. It is significantly higher grant eligibility, so a million dollar grant opportunities in this one. So a great opportunity for us. There's a number of, of towns, including several on the Cape, that have been awarded this. And as we get into this, we believe that we'll be able to be, to go for that grant this coming year. The application is due at the end of this year. We have four out of the six criteria already done. There's two more that I'll talk to you tonight about. And both of those, the state is asking that the Select Board in the town adopt or at least concur, whatever the proper wording is for the, for those two pieces. So next chart, please, I'll talk to you about.
Tom, I mentioned, I didn't even get a chance to talk to you, but we did meet with green communities last week on their final inspection, and I told them about the plans we had all been talking about for the campus concept on a microgrid and for the electrification project of Town Hall. They're very excited and would love to give us this million dollars.
And we love to get it, right? So the, the first piece is the zero emission first policy. It's really not that onerous. It's an upgrade to our current energy, our vehicle efficiency policy. And what it does is it adds consideration in the procurement process for the possibility of getting one of the higher efficiency zero emission vehicles. It is subject to department discretion. It's subject to the things you see on the right hand side. It has to meet operational needs. It, it has to have adequate competition and purchasing, has to be commercially available and practicable. You have to have availability of maintenance, you know? So there's a number of criteria there that could not get out of consideration. It's really setting things up for the future as vehicles become more available to us. And frankly, a lot of those come with grants as well. The state is asking that the towns at least consider that as a possibility along the, the procurement process. It is that the town manages discretion. The policy has been reviewed by a number of folks in the staff. You can see that list there. Shayna had sent that around, and she reports that she's received no negative comments on that. So we feel it is not a very onerous policy. And the question that we can, we can get to is what would the Select Board like to do in terms of next steps on that?
One question, Tom. Currently available and practicals, let's say we find it's not, we can't get them charged or we can't get them repaired and so forth. Does that affect us in our application for a grant if we adopt the zero emission vehicle policy?
So the first part of the, I think, your question is if it's not, if, if, if the vehicles available don't meet the needs of the department or don't meet those needs that you just mentioned. And certainly operations and maintenance is a key part of that. You can see the, the list of priorities there. It drops itself down through the hybrids and through a standard gas vehicle. So we're not constrained. They're just asking us to consider and see what's out there. In terms of the availability of this million dollar grant, they're just asking that we adopt the policy.
Okay, thank you.
And the policy is in your, your meeting packet. It's about a four pager.
Do you just to hold our questions on all this till the end? Do you want to do the whole presentation first or the easier?
Whatever it's, I, I don't, I don't mind if we do it now, we remember, and he's, it's right, right there, what he has so that we can, I think that'll move it along faster.
Sure, sure.
Okay, um, do, do we know, just because we don't really get much updates, and usually it's the staff that are using all the current electric vehicles that the town has, like kind of what the feedback is from current staff? And, you know, are people liking these vehicles? Are there any issues for the town with what we currently have, right? Or, you know, before we dive even deeper into something that might be an upgraded version or?
I think feedback from the staff initially was mixed. It took some getting used to.
Fair.
But that's been three years now at least. And now it's pretty, whatever's available is what they use. And the only issue we have, there's still some, and I know there's a term for it, Tom, maybe you know it, some anxiousness about if you have to go a long distance and being able to recharge along the way. So there is a tendency to use the two gas fuel vehicles we have for long distance trips.
So this.
Around town, the electrics have been fabulous.
Great, which makes sense for a lot of our like inspectors and things like that. So it wouldn't be a total elimination of any standard gas vehicles, obviously, because you have some exempt ones. So that would also apply for like long distance vehicles for just regular staff stuff too. Okay.
In the case of a need for a long distance vehicle, certainly if a battery electric or a hybrid doesn't provide that, then you fall down to the next in the, in the priority list, which ends up at the gas. But I'll say that there's a lot of more extended range vehicles available now than there were when the Leafs were purchased. The Leafs have, have, are lower end in that range.
So is this a matter of we mostly already have this in practice? And it would just be the Select Board adopting, adopting it into policy in the way that the state wants? Because it sounds like we've already been moving some of the fleet vehicles as applicable over to electric, which I think is also part of green communities in general. So is this just a?
It's a more form.
I think the only impact is just a more formal consideration when we do our fleet assessments on replacements, that we go down this vehicle procurement priority checklist and what is suitable for electric versus what isn't. So just actually doing it.
Bob, was the priority criteria defined by the state? Where did that come from?
It was, the state gave us a template. We did a little bit of work. Roberta did a lot of that legwork in talking to other towns and to doing slight tweaks to make it, you know, to make it a good fit for Eastham. But it is mostly the, the template that the state gave us.
Thanks.
And so we have the draft, and we'll eventually look at it and put on the agenda again, because you will need an up or down vote from the Select Board before December 31. So if we, if it's an up, you can apply for those grants.
Correct. Now, I think what we'll be coordinating with Shayna and Rich in terms of the Climate Leaders Grant. So I would suggest earlier.
Earlier than later, yeah.
Earlier than later is also helpful, because we'll get that, get that grant submitted as early as we can.
Thank you.
Okay. Next chart, please. So the decarbonization roadmap. It will look more onerous, but it really isn't. It's going to be a very big document. And what it does is it sets a series of, of goals and guidance for doing upgrades for the buildings. The, you know, Rich mentioned the Police Department and the Town Hall. Those are certainly in the, you know, key items. There's also other buildings that are, that are on the list that is part of the Eastham focus in terms of our, our energy use. But it will be synchronized with the capital plan, and it's also frankly, subject to discretion of the town. It can be adjusted, it can be moved around. It's just a guideline, that, a set of goals that we'll work towards. And it also sets out a, a, a set of grants for us to go after. And so that million dollar grant, what they'll be looking for is that we address some or many of the items on the decarbonization roadmap. So the status of it right now is that it's been reviewed. We sent a bunch of comments back to the state. The state actually paid for a consultant to do this plan for us. It's synchronized with the age of the buildings and tries to predict when different buildings will need upgrades based on the useful life of, of the equipment. So we're not looking to accelerate any of that necessarily. Once that, those comments get back, they'll be reviewed again. And I think there, like I said, there, there will be a good executive summary, and then we can also do a more concise summary for the Select Board for consideration.
Does this have the same, same deadline? We need to do these in order to apply for the grants?
Correct.
We'd have to, the sound, I have to adopt both of these.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
And this is just for municipal buildings?
It is just municipal buildings.
Okay.
Okay, next chart, please. And then the final piece I wanted to mention is the status on the Climate Action Plan. This will be coming your way at the beginning of the year for adoption. We are very lucky to have the Cape Cod Commission, their, their technical assistance, which they have funded themselves, as you know, to do this. They've done an outstanding job in doing outreach to the community. They've interviewed the staff, they've interviewed a number of key groups in the community, such as the business community, the part-time residence community, the, the even went out to the schools and did another outreach for low income folks. So they've, they've really done an amazing job of getting out there, collecting information which they are now digesting. Because again, the reason for this is to have a, a plan that is, is built for Eastham and not coming down from, from Boston. The next step will be a workshop targeting October 30th. That'll be announced soon. There'll be two sessions. One will be a live session. We might do that at the library, might do it here. I think a really important piece of that is to get as much of the staff involved as possible, because we're really looking for those inputs and the help in prioritizing what are the important steps based on the cost benefit of each of the recommended actions. Then that plan will be available in the November timeframe for comment. The commission has offered to do a presentation for the, the board, which would give you a summarized view of that. So that's something to, to think about. They'll be putting that, that idea together shortly. And then we'll also be meeting with the Strategic Planning Committee, once all is said and done, to look at taking the top critical, important items for the town, working with the, the Strategic Planning Committee to decide which, which of those go into that plan, and then we'll incorporate that in. And then the idea is to have the, the Select Board adopt this at the beginning of the year, once all is said and done.
All right.
All right. So that is it. And summary page. And yeah, we look forward to working with you in whatever way you think appropriate for those two green communities, Climate Leader application pieces.
Right, do you have any idea of the roadmap but finality of it to, to bring it before the Select Board? Do you have any idea of timing for, the timing on that?
So the comments have been expected, I'm sorry, we sent the comments in, the corrections have been expected any time now. The state hasn't quite sent those back yet. They had told Shayna last week that it's, it's imminent. They expect to get it in this month. So we'll send that around again for another review at that point.
Okay, thank you.
You're, so you're going to have a meeting, so the Energy and Climate Action, you're going to meet, once you get those comments back, you'll meet, discuss it, and then you'll send it to us?
Correct. Well, we'll coordinate through, I think, Rich and Shayna. And at that point, if all looks good, we will then surprise that for you.
You'll be back before us then, yes. All right.
Maybe in November.
Okay.
Okay.
Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There was a lot of information, and you made it concise. I appreciate it.
Well, I remember your advice, be brief, be brilliant, be gone, so.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, that's, that's right. It's so.
And thank you for the committee for taking
Right.
these things on.
Yes, yes. Next, we'll be zoning and regulation presentation, Mary Neat. Now, Tom, you want to know my other committee? One here. That's the other one I would, would avoid. Mary, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm here representing the Eastham Zoning Task Force. I think we have some slides, and I don't think I'm going to be as concise as Tom, but I'm going to try to try my best. Okay. You can go to next. Okay, um, I just want to do two, two quick introductory things before we get into the specific topics. I think the timeframe is really important to consider, and when we go to the topics, that'll become apparent. We, we have 10 items before you that we've, we were thinking of working on this year for town meeting, and then another seven items that we've identified as important, but we, we don't think will be ready for town meeting. Our, the way our cycle goes, after town meeting, we met once again to brainstorm potential topics. We did a lot of research over the summer. We met again in August, and that's where we came up with this draft. We need to work now, we start tomorrow, and work through about the first of the year in order to identify, do the research, touch base with town council, talk to other towns, et cetera, and then get a set of recommendations sort of presented or prepared for January 1. And then between January and February 1, we write warrant articles and, and write reports and come back to this committee. It's a very compressed time. So while we've put 10 topics on the agenda that have risen to the surface, I can guarantee you, we will not get them all done. And I can't tell you which ones will be done. They are presented to you not in any priority fashion. They are, just consider this a list. And what we need tonight is we need to get some of your feedback in terms of your priorities. Now, even with your priorities, let me say, we'll go back and we'll start doing all that research, and we may not be able to either finish something or gather enough information. So that's why we, generally speaking, we come back to you in December to say, okay, we've been working this for two or three months. Here's where we are. We think, you know, five, six, or whatever number we'll, we'll be ready for town meeting. So that's just a little bit of the process. And the second thing, this is just a reminder that we, we look to the town's adopted plans, whether it's strategic plans, master plans, housing plans, et cetera. And we, we sort of take the perspective of the town has adopted plans with goals and, and objectives. We look at that as the policy and the direction, and then we try to fit regulatory adjustments to, to meet those. So when we talk a little bit later, there are some plans, and I think the Climate Action Plan is actually the number one on this list, that the town's adoption of that plan will be very important in the future for the zoning work. We can go to the next one. So why don't we just dive right in here? Some of these are just details, and some of them are a little bit bigger. The Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, we want to look at that. Paul was able to go out to the Cape Cod Commission. I'd echo Tom's comments. They have been unbelievably great to us in the last two or three years. And they had a consultant onboard doing other work for them, and they just allowed him to do some work and take a look at our inclusionary bylaw. So we got a whole, whole. whole analysis without any without anything. So that was great. But we found an issue that we're not looking to reopen the concept of having some percentage of units affordable as part of developments. But what we're finding is, you know, we advocated, especially in the DCPC, for workforce in top of the shop housing. And we're starting to see projects in which there are less than five units, or they're just hitting five units. And the regulatory requirements around inclusionary zoning are very onerous when you have just one unit. We have some analysis, and we're going to pursue that about how we might mitigate some of the regulatory requirements without sacrificing the affordability. So more to come. We're sort of kicking the tires there. The Cape Cod Commission has a single family to multifamily conversion. We want to take a look at this. You know, one of the members of the task force said, you know, what if someone had a big old house and but the notion that maybe that could be converted to three units or something? We want to just explore, is that an opportunity to create more housing without actually building more housing? The Cape Cod Commission Design Driven Model Housing Bylaw for District D. That's a lot. We did the DCPC, but if you remember, the DCPC starts just north of Salt Pond going to the Chocolate Cafe or thereabouts. The District E is really this district. It's from the Salt Pond down to maybe a little past the gas station, so to speak. It's mostly, you know, the town green, town hall, a lot of municipal facilities, but there are some commercial properties there. And the question is, do we want to take a look at continuing some of the principles that we had in the DCPC around? Whether it's form-based design or some of the other aspects of, you know, as property gets redeveloped, would we want some of those standards to be in this district? Again, something we want to take a look at. Site coverage, neighborhood averages. This is a big one and probably one of the more difficult ones. Two years ago, when we came forward and we proposed a group of development limits, we had sort of two things that we were trying to achieve. What should be the maximum on a particular sized lot? And also, what was the criteria for evaluating what is the neighborhood characteristic and how a larger property might affect the neighborhood characteristic? We spent a huge amount of time calculating numbers around maximum size. And we started down the road of looking at neighborhood characteristics. We literally ran out of time. We didn't have time to do a thorough analysis of should we have some sort of really objective criteria with specific guidelines? And instead, we wrote language that we thought would guide the decisions around neighborhood characteristics. What we found now, two years out, is that language is is not really being considered as much. And and the arguments are that the development limits are really the only thing that's being considered. So we'd like to go back and look at whether we could put some definition around neighborhood characteristics and growth rates, et cetera. So that's that's one there. The motel cottage colony conversion, we need, and this is probably a legal analysis. We need to figure out the laws and the zoning regulations, you know, when we in the in the current amendment, we don't do not allow the town, the zoning does not allow less than a three-month rental. You can't do short-term rentals in those conversions. But the the goal was to try to see if those properties got converted, could they be converted to year-round housing? And we don't have language in the current law that mandates year-round housing. There's an open question legally whether you can. So we want to go back and just evaluate that for the future. Appointment of zoning enforcement support staff. Under the under the master chapter 40A, the enforcement powers are within the building commissioner. From a capacity point of view, the reality is the building commissioner cannot do their job and then have comprehensive proactive enforcement of zoning regulations. It's literally a capacity issue. So there is a legal legal technicality, and we're not sure. And again, another question for town council. Is this simply a designation by the select board? Is it a town meeting vote? But there is allowances within the law that a town can designate someone else to do enforcement. So we want to pursue this in terms of, you know, even at a minimum, could someone else in the planning department take on enforcement? Now, I will speak, you know, and I can, I know I speak for a couple of the task force members. I won't speak for Paul because, you know, as a town employee, he he doesn't really go here. I think this is a serious issue that we should look at. I mean, I think one thing we should do is get the ability to designate someone to do this, just so that we have that legally done. I think that there's a much larger question, and I know budgets are terribly tight. But we've passed a lot of zoning amendments, and they're only going to be effective, in fact, if they're enforced. And I would just raise two issues around enforcement. One is because we have uneven or lack of enforcement right now, we have reactive enforcement when someone calls and complains. I think we're opening ourselves up legally to sort of what is the legal term? You'll know it, Jerry, sort of not consistent enforcement.
Discriminatory enforcement.
Yes, yes, yes. So so I think I think, you know, if we found something really egregious and we acted upon it, but we had ignored 10 others, we put ourselves in a in a legal quandary there. The other thing, and I and I thought of this when I was listening to the RTE conversation, I think it was a week ago, and and the notion of the community and being able to live amongst each other in harmony. We now have a system where you have to call and complain and file a formal complaint against your neighbor to address the zoning problem. We're actually, we have a de facto system in which you you're creating conflict amongst neighbors. So I really would hope that the board would seriously consider this. At a minimum, give us, you know, the definition of designation of someone to do this, but then in your budget process, really think about this this whole issue.
Excuse me, Mary?
Yes.
Do other towns have any zoning police? Besides the building commissioner?
I think so. I mean, I can speak from the city. We have we have whole departments on that, but.
That would be something to come to us to show some level of what's the word? Somebody who's done it already.
Okay.
Precedents, precedents.
Precedents. Yeah, we can. We can certainly take a look at that. Fence regulations. This was something, and I'll alone up to it. I brought up to Paul and the task force. I said, I have a brother who lives up in Yarmouth, and I'm always on the midcape driving around. And I I went through a historic district, and I thought, oh, this is quaint. And then on the left-hand side, I passed what felt like a quarter mile of white vinyl fencing right up to the property line. And I thought, oh, my God, this is a wall. And I said to my brother, how did that happen? And he said, it's a subdivision, and the fencing regulations was what it was. And so coming back to Eastham, we are starting to see a little bit of a trend. I can name about four of them. Where high walls are starting right at the property line. So taking a look at this, we're not talking about back, we're not talking about eliminating fences, backyards. It was sort of the if the aesthetic of of Eastham, as you drive roads, is beautiful greenery, do we want to preserve that in some way? And whether it's setbacks for fencing with landscape, whether it's, you know, lower fencing? I don't, I'm not having a recommendation. I just, I put this on the list because I think there's about a half a dozen of these things happening. But if you go to midcape, it's all over the place. And so before it gets too far, we might want to take a look at it. So that's just one. Campers and lodgeboat storage. Right now, campers are the responsibility of the select board to approve permits for campers. And so, you know, the easy fix might be saying, well, let's just change the word and make it the planning board. The more complicated part of that is there's no guidelines for campers. Are there size regulations? Are there setbacks? Are there are they screening? It's whatever. So besides just handing this ball off to the select board, to the planning board without really thinking through, well, what's the criteria that they would evaluate this? We want to take a look at it. And as we talked about it, the two things we see in yards are campers and boats. And and should we be looking at boats? And this is an open question. We've done no research on this. It's just a, it's just an issue, you know, that has come up.
Could you speak to what what kind of boat?
We did, we're not, we're just saying.
You were just like, oh, it's large.
Well, you know, you know.
If it was campers, it should be.
Again, I'm not making any proposal, but you know, someone has a skiff in their yard, is that different than if someone has a 40-foot boulder there, front yard? I don't know. And do we care? So this is a topic that when we were looking at campers, we said, well, if we're looking at large vehicles in
Okay.
driveways, should we look at both of them?
Okay.
But we've done no analysis right now, and we have no recommendations. It's literally just a topic to put on a list. The side cone code, we really, we have a lot of issues with temporary signs, so we need to take a look at what the rules and regulations of temporary signs are, and and that's about it. And definitions, you've seen us come come forward every year with some technical amendments. At one year, we changed the word from grass to landscape. We're continually finding little things, and it's not so much that what we've put on the books is bad, but sometimes we find one section 40 pages later that has a slightly different interpretation. And you don't have any ambiguity. We get into legal issues. We get into people arguing definitions. So Paul is kind of going through and scrubbing the zoning code to find out wherever those little things are and that we need. Like, for example, we don't have, we say sheds can be 200 square feet, but we don't define what a shed is. And now you would say common sense. Well, we, everyone knows what a shed is. Well, a shed, a guesthouse, a, you know, a container. There's a lot of nuance here. So again, we wanted to take a look at that.
Mary, do you want questions on this section?
Well, let me, let me ask you. We can do, we can do this section, and then I can talk about the deferrals. The things we don't think are right for this year.
Let's, let's.
Let's do this one, the first 10. Okay.
Yeah, Jamie?
Great. This is a great list. And again, the hard work from this task force is always impressive. So thank you very much for that. Just some feedback. I think number six, you know, with the enforcement is I think that it has to happen before anything else on the list can even really happen, you know, because without the ability to enforce all these wonderful ideas that you may have, you know, that that there's no point. And so I think number six is fantastic and and should be a priority. I did also think number four, the idea of quantifying something that may be subjective is also a great path. It makes it much easier, especially with transient boards and committees where, you know, you kind of lose sight of, you know, how to define something. When you quantify it, it becomes a number, and it's much easier to define. So I think that makes, you know, takes some of the pressure off any board when it's a number. So I think that's a great idea, too. I did have some reluctance with number eight. But I didn't really see much of an issue because I know as a board, we've talked about moving the camper topic to the ZBA, but I am very wary of touching anything having to do with boat storage. We're a fishing community, and we always have been. That's why people are here. And I feel like that's a very slippery slope. When you start to touch that, it becomes a Pandora's box of what is okay and what is not. And so I'm I'm supportive of eight without the boat part. But I think everything else, you know, you know, everything else kind of hinges on six. Thanks.
Yeah, a question. On the site coverage, neighborhood averages, has has that been, have we been doing that on the zoning board informally? I know Joanne looks at that kind of stuff. Do you know if they're if they're actually trying to use some methodology like that?
I want to give the right answer.
Yeah, sure.
We have been off and on, not consistently. And part of that is because we don't allow, I was just gonna say, it's difficult because we're trying to use assessing data for something that assessing data isn't meant for, but it's the best available information. So when we're trying to review a site plan or or a construction project, it's not always apples to apples. So we want to explore, can we use the assessing data? Does it make sense to begin with? And then what's what's involved with trying to get that data into a format where we can like kind of easily spit out a report that will give some average for site coverage? So but we haven't really done it consistently, really, because it's a formatting, data formatting issue. So myself, others in the planning department, certain projects, we kind of pick and choose if we know this is kind of a big project and we make the time to do it, kind of manually crunch the numbers, but not consistently over the years. We haven't done it.
Okay, I'm in favor of it if we had the data. And I was just wondering also as a follow-up, did you ever think, if you if you got the average, is has there been discussion about how far from the average you could you could go? I mean, because that becomes sort of a real gating factor.
We we haven't dug deep into this since, Bob, I think you were last on this on this committee. But I mean, the only other standard we have, and I'm not saying this would be the standard. But for example, in the Cape Cod National Seashore, those properties, those existing properties that can continue, can continue and expand up to 50%. So there's already been a standard for 30% of the town that they have 50%. So we, again, that would probably be a starting point where we would look at that.
That's a good answer. I got it. And Leslie, I also support the number eight without the boat. I think I remember when we were looking for a house here years ago, the the theory with the MO with with Eastham was anything goes. And I know that's not the case anymore, but I think with a with a coastal community, I think we really ought to not touch that one. And in fact, it almost is bordering on blight law, which we haven't touched with a 10-foot pole.
Yep. My comments.
Suzanne?
I also agree on number six for the zoning enforcement. I, your committee does such thoughtful work that I feel really reflects Eastham. And so I have some interest in the fence regulation and the sign code. But again, it would have to come probably after six. And then after that, I am generally interested in the single family to multifamily conversion. I, maybe a good place, I guess I'd be interested to know how many properties that might apply to before sending you guys too far down that work, like if we don't have houses that are large enough to really do that, too, you know, if it's like fine.
Be a good number.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, maybe if we could find out what that number is first, that would be helpful. And then do to do the site cover, number four, the site coverage for neighborhood averages, because it takes the work that the committee had previously done, but hadn't quite done to its completion. And kind of like the definitions, which seems to be easier. It would add clarity to the boards that need to implement these bylaws, and then also would probably help enforcement. And the this, I don't mean to be like, I love the whole list, but the inclusionary zoning bylaw revisions seems important since you're going through it. Current, you had a project that came up, and then also with the passing of our form-based code. I guess you could probably kick it to next year, but next year looks really intense as well. And my thoughts on three, which is the Cape Cod Commission Design Driven Housing Model Bylaw for District E. A fight that would, I would maybe put on a back burner only because it might be easier to implement once we have some work in our DCPC done, you know, in terms of what that looks like and like the the issues that arise during implementation. the issues that arise during implementation before you input.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and I would just say, you know, one of the things about, anyway, you see Cape Cod model bylaws. We, you know, the fact, if there are model bylaws, one of the things that the commission has been very good at about is giving us access to the consultants and the staff that worked on the development of that. So often we can grab studies, we can find out who else is, you know, using these bylaws. So, you know, when the Cape Cod Commission comes out with some things, sort of half the work may be done. And, and so that's one of the reasons we sort of gravitate and look and say, okay, is this appropriate for Eastham? You know, can we get more information? Because right now, I mean, last year with the DC PC, we did have, you know, full time, you know, consultants, two, two Billy senior consultants working with us. So right now we're sort of back to doing it on our own. So.
Well, I, look, enforcement is, I think you've heard from everyone here, is important. I mean, I think it's important from the point of view of the town passes a bylaw or basically a law, a regulation, and we don't enforce it. You haven't done it. It's kind of looks, looks bad on town, town government that way to, and spend the time at town meeting, et cetera, and it, and, and nothing happens. So I think that's a really important, important one to look at. And, and the definitions, you always are looking at the tweak. And I think that's going to be happening all the time. So you just, Paul finds something that's a problem and you take a look at it and see, can we fix this issue? I, I do think you need to not be overwhelmed. So if there are things like Cape Cod Commission can help you and so forth, you can look to those. We did spend a lot of time inclusion, on inclusionary zoning bylaws. And that might be one that you look at since we spent an awful lot of effort last year on it to, to make sure we, we try and fix it up. There's a little bit of glitch here. Let, let, let's see if we can fix it. So those are the things I think where you, you should look at. But for the task force, don't get overwhelmed. Let's go, let, let's do it. Let's go and do things. And my final thing, anything where you're worried about legally, can you do it? Throw it on the attorney and get the answer, even if you're going to do it two years from now. So at least you know whether it's worth even looking at.
Mm hmm.
All right?
We do. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
I haven't said anything, but I really agree with everything. They kind of took all my points.
Okay.
And, but I, I do agree, the enforcement is the big thing. Because otherwise it's, it's kind of meaningless to do all this work. And you've done really, really detailed, great work. I was so happy to see that camper. I've been trying to push that off since two thousand eight.
Okay.
All right.
So was that, and did you need more directed than that?
And, and again, as I said, your input is very important. We certainly give that consideration. And then we start working at these issues and some, you know, some we find it's just impossible to do. And again, we'll report back in December, what, you know, sort of give you a status report. You want me to touch upon?
Go ahead.
The deferrals, okay. I'm going to just say number eleven and number twelve. And let me just say, this summer, the Cape Cod Commission issued a whole bunch of coastal resiliency bylaws. And several of us on the task force attended their presentation in Eastham. We've also attended a coastal resiliency conference in, in Provincetown. And this is one of those things that, what you will see is there is, there are vulnerable areas on our Bayside, particularly on our Bayside in many, many places. And there are some vulnerable areas that, very vulnerable. And I think it's going to be critically important when you get this plan in the beginning of the year that the, that the select board really, really understands the nature of the problem. Really kind of comes to some conclusions around what sort of direction. Because the model bylaws that the Cape Cod Commission have identified and have written give all kinds of options for how you deal with the advent of, you know, nitrogen and, and sea level rising and, and, and the thousand year storm that might hit. And right now, we are not in, from a zoning perspective, and I, I don't want to speak to, to the other aspects of the town, but from a zoning perspective, we're not considering these right now. And we're not taking zoning action. And, you know, and, and, and these can be very controversial. I mean, a, again, it's going to be, how does the town feel about the science? And what we think about the science and how fast we think this is going to happen? Because I've, in my personal experience in the last five years, I've watched Paul struggle with two seashore properties that were about to fall into the water. And, and they're being dealt with almost as a one off. You know, you have to, the policies and the planning and the zoning and the movement, you know, they're getting resolved, but they're not sort of systemically getting resolved. And, you know, if we had some horrible storm where several properties were hanging off the bay, you know, we would be scrambling. And so some of it is, you know, preventative in that respect. And the other thing is, we are continuing to approve, as we did two months ago, expansion of coastal properties. And it's within the current zoning, but it's not reflective of what we think might be coming. So this is one of those things that there's a great deal of preparedness. And there's, there's a lot of science and there's a lot of models. But we don't feel we're ready until the town sort of embraces what in fact is the plans? What are the goals? What should we be thinking about? So I would strongly encourage, when this report comes out in January, that you really, it, it, and it just, it is not just zoning. I mean, there's a whole bunch of conservation commission regulations around marsh and wetlands. And then there's other things. There's operational. There's roadway flooding, which we're already seeing, which is being projected to increase. So there's capital project, there is emergency evacuation procedures. I mean, there's a, this, this could be very comprehensive in terms of what does Eastham do in the face of some very detrimental weather and climate action? And I, you know, we, we would be prepared to take on the zoning, but we really need some guidance from the town around your future plans. Commercial, I'm just going to skip down to thirteen. Commercial uses in residential properties, this is something we're just observing. The Nantucket situation, which we've talked about before, has been appealed by the town to the Superior Court or State Supreme Court, the land, the court. Nantucket has gone, this was the case where a woman sued the town and won in land court because she was next to an Airbnb. And it was very detrimental to her, her living. And, and she sued that the town did not allow commercial entities in residential districts, which is what we have and what most of the Cape Cod towns have. So this is a very broad situation. They've gone to town meeting four times to try to do a workaround. And year round residents are opposing any workaround. So it's, the economic issues, the legal issues are very broad here. So we, we haven't touched this, but we, I would say when the Nat, Nantucket ruling comes down, it'd be something we all should take a serious look at because it has really big implications. Open space residential bylaw, adding housing density bonus. This was unfinished business when we did, when we updated the open space residential development bylaw. We didn't add density bonuses in. And now with this and, and really with number fifteen, reducing minimum size lots in residential districts, both of these issues have come up. But we really need to see wastewater planning and regulations to get a little further along till we can understand what in fact capacity is and, and density. So ADU bylaw, we, we have passed one. Again, we put into it year round tenancy. We have not heard back from the AG as to whether that particular bylaw is going to be approved. So we're in a waiting mode. We approved it at a town meeting. And this issue of long term tenancy might be a legal issue. We may have to just revisit our bylaw depending upon how that comes down. And then tiny houses is part of a whole package with seasonal communities. We are waiting to see what the final regulations are with seasonal communities. You know, it's, it, we thought it was June, then it was September. I'm not sure when it's going to be. It, it's coming. There will be regulations and interpretations. And then we may have to go back and either add new bylaws or tweak our bylaws, but we're just not ready for that yet. And that's what we have.
That all?
That's it.
Okay.
You could, could you put that last slide back up?
Go first, Amy?
Yeah, do mine. We got Amy, go first.
I'm just, on that last slide about the seasonal communities, the tiny homes and the undersized lots. I thought the tiny homes, they didn't have to be in all districts. It was just, we could create a district where they would be allowed.
Right, so it's not.
I believe that's what it said in the Seasonal Communities Act. Now, I'm not sure what their guidelines are going to say coming up, but I, I do believe it's soon.
Well.
By the end of the month.
And we looked at the law, the law, but we, again, we're trying to, there's, there's just been a lot of dialogue with the seasonal communities. So we were just unsure where things were going to land. So that, that, that was really the only deferral.
Gotcha.
There.
We should know soon.
Yeah. Go ahead. Did you have something else, or?
No, I was going to say, and, and that, you know, if, if we hear tomorrow, that that's, you know, we, we have clarity. Again, it can go, it could go on the list. I mean, we, I, I think we, we added short term rental zoning in a, in a January meeting. So.
Right.
So, you know.
And they might even have model bylaws that we can.
Yeah, hopefully.
Take from.
Okay. Great. Thank you. One thing I wanted to, was hoping to see on this list that I've heard talked about before by the board and by the task force, I think is light pollution and the idea of kind of regulation around light pollution. Especially, I mean, I find that, you know, as you get into the peak season here on the Cape, a lot of people leave their lights on all night like it was city. And you don't need to do that here. And, you know, you get so used to there not being lights on on top of all the other environmental impacts that you see with those types of issues. And so I just think it's something that might be useful for the town to look at is light pollution and kind of its impacts and any kind of regulation we can do around that. So reducing minimum lot size is one of those things where I feel like, you know, I, maybe I have a little unpopular opinion there because I, I just worry again about kind of like the long term effects of big moves like that being done before a lot of little things are put in place first. You know, on the page prior, you have things about fence regulation and like things like that. But then if you start reducing lot size, people are going to want fences up, right? Because now you're right on top of each other. Like, I just feel like there's like issues around reducing lot sizes that can't be undone once you go there. And I feel like if it's something that is going to be looked at, it needs to be extremely thorough and, you know, kind of targeted on where and how it's done. Just because I feel like there are so many ripple effects once you kind of unlock that.
It would also, it affects septic wastewater is, is, is a big, big item on lots, lot size. I used to say septic tanks is, are what reduces, controls the lot size in Eastham.
And the, the community and, you know, what Eastham looks like and what we're used to seeing on the Cape. You know, it's something that I think people might be a little wary of. And it really, if it's going to work, it has to be really specific.
Agreed. And, and, and you know, again, some of these coming out of the Seasonal Communities Act and as well as model bylaws. You know, Eastham is sort of unique in the sense that many of these came from towns that had one acre zoning, suburbs that had one acre zoning. Only fifteen percent of our town is one acre or more. Eighty-five percent of our town is in lots less than forty thousand square feet with a huge number of twenty and ten thousand square foot lots over on the Bayside. So we have to not only look at bylaws and laws, but to your point, how that applies to Eastham in terms of how we're constructed already.
Yeah, thanks.
And, and the final point, I, I mentioned this to Jackie and, and, you know, maybe after town meeting, it's something we can work on. I think enforcement is, you know, again, I've made my pitch about staff capacity, but I, I also think communication could be very important. I mean, I could see a, a, you know, trifold brochure, which really highlights all of the zoning changes with links to the zoning and, and mail that out to everyone in the town and mail it out to all the developers. And, you know, so we're creating more awareness.
So they can properly inform people when they buy their.
When they're buying, yeah, I just, I just think that, I just think this summer would be really, you know, once we get through town meeting, you know, we've already passed, we've passed twenty amendments in forty-four years. If we do another, let's say, five more amendments, now we've got twenty-five bylaw changes. And I, I, I really do think it.
Yeah.
I think, you know, it would help our enforcement because some, a lot of times people just aren't aware.
Right.
They do things and they're just not aware of what's happening. So that would be my pitch there.
Thank you so much. This was great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. I appreciate it. So now we move on to, I think, Mr. Let. Paul, are you up or? Who's up?
Come on down. I'm going to start at the table.
There's your lights on and you're all set.
We have a, some other slides on the desktop. So I'm going to, Hope Clavon is our chair of our strategic planning committee. I'm going to let her kick things off and then I have a few slides to go through.
All right. Thank you.
So, good evening and thank you for the time. And I know you have the full plan in, in your packet. I just, a couple of things I wanted to, to say thank you to Jackie and Paul. And Jackie, who did amazing work on the plan and the digital dashboard that you're going to see. And also to our strategic planning team, which is in the back of the room, Patty and Brian and Karen and Caroline. And also as we go, as Paul goes through this, two big things, I guess I just wanted to kind of set up for you is that, one is that this is truly intended to be a, a working document and a document that serves the select board, the town, the committees and task forces and the community. So, and it's going to evolve and change and, and it should. And the other thing is that it has to be a collaboration. So Paul will go over it, I think. But, you know, working with all of you, working with the committee members, all the task forces and all the town staff, and then again, the community, to make sure that we're getting things right, that we're, we're aligned with our goals and our visions and our missions. And, and they're all going to change, you know, as we have, you know, new climate action things that are happening. There are in zoning things that are happening. So it all has to evolve, but this is the place to bring it together. So with those two overarching kind of caveats, just as Paul presents, we are, we, we welcome your questions, your input. And in advance, thank you for all of the work that will, is to come.
Thank, thank you.
Turn me.
So just, I think everyone's familiar that we, we have a five year plan. We've had one. It's been pretty successful, I'd say, the first iteration, the first time Eastham ever did one. But when it came time to update, just to, to Hope's comments, it really became apparent that the next iteration needed to be something that was a little more nimble, a little more of a working document, didn't get just stuck being just a, 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 a reference that sometimes is referred to. I think we've done a good job of incorporating the plan over the last five years into the budget process. I know Rich stresses that to the staff when we're doing our annual budget. But as far as tracking, implementing and really kind of digging into it, the last plan was a little cumbersome. And so what we tried to do is simplify it, but not start from strap, not start from scratch. So keeping the guiding principles and the core goals and strategic action items, but trying to make it simplified and more again, as a working document. Next slide, please. Again, I, I want to give my thanks to the strategic planning committee. We've had some changes over the years and we have some new, new faces. I think Steve Rogers is with us. He's our newest member. And we're looking forward to having, getting him on board and digging into the details. But this group's been really excellent to work with. Again, we have good representation from, from boards and committees. And I think that knowledge and experience has come in handy in trying to like formulate how this plan is going to actually work once it's done and we start implementing it. So my thanks to the strategic planning committee. Next slide, please. So our approach to updating the plan, as I mentioned, we, we didn't want to start from scratch. So we, we are retaining the guiding principles from the first plan. We've added some new focus areas. Again, times have changed. We have some high profile things we get to. We have some high-profile things we get to address with climate. So we, we put climate adaptation and municipal services are kind of the two big new things in the plan. A key to this iteration of the plan is integrating the many individual management plans. And I think you've heard me talk about this approach in earlier updates, but we have a lot of plans in town. We're really good at making plans and our plans are really good. They have a lot, we have housing plan, wastewater plan, open space, rec plan. We're going to have a tremendous climate plan coming out. All of these plans have a lot of great information and they all have to-do lists, action items, recommendations. What we wanted to do with this, again, going back to having this be a more of a working, evolving plan is go back into the, all of these other plans, pull out what is the top three, five, 10, whatever it might be from all those plans, vet those and nest them into the strategic plans where actually they move up. And as things get done in the strategic, in the strategic plan, we have a method to go back down into those sub-plans and say, what's next? And working, this will point, I'll make in a minute, just getting back to the role of the strategic planning committee and, and kind of helping to have this plan evolve and change over time as progress is made. So that's really key and that was a huge thing. My thanks to all of our staff because that was really the work that the staff had to do and help, help me go through all those plans and say, what, what's the top, what are the top things? They're already working on things that are in these sub-plans. So that was, that's a big component to this updated plan. Another big thing, oh, sorry. Another big thing is trying to leverage regional model bylaws and best practices whenever possible. You heard Mary talk about Cape Cod Commission has a lot of model bylaws. There's a lot of great info out there. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. So where we can just take those model bylaws, vet them, see if they're appropriate for Eastham and how we might tweak them, but basically not reinvent the wheel. So that's reflected in a lot of the action items in this plan. I know you've heard Jackie say this, but also want to make sure that, you know, our approach was understanding that the projects in this plan are in addition to our normal day-to-day operations. The staff, it's a capacity issue. We have tremendous staff and we're a very busy little town. All of these is, so making time in the, having the capacity to make sure we can make good progress on this plan is a key to understanding that. Again, redesigning and simplifying the plan so it can be more of a management tool for department staff, for department managers, for the town manager, and ultimately for the select board to keep track of these things and monitor, do we have staffing capacity? Do we have financial capacity? Do we have funds to do this? Do we need to get grants? What things might get held up based on things outside of the town's control and so on? So having a plan we can refer to and adapt and adjust accordingly. And finally, a big piece of this is getting better at integrating the strategic planning committee into monitoring and implementation. In our last iteration, we did the plan and then I know members on the strategic planning committee kind of struggled to say like, well, now what do we do? We did the plan, but now what's our role? And should we be meeting regularly? Should we be asking for reports? Should we be, be going out in the community and advocating? And it kind of all got a little bit jumbled, who should be responsible for what? So we've laid out a plan or a strategy that the strategic plan can really play an important role. I think I want to go to the next slide. I think it's on here. Oh, sorry. Before I get to that, I just obviously wanted to share what the, the guiding principles, kind of this is the structure of the plan. So guiding principles are retained from the original plan. The goals are pretty much the same with the exception of we added in the, the housing element and the excellence in town services. A bit of just word adjustment on the goals, but the other ones really remain the same. And then finally, we, we adjusted the layout somewhat. We had in the old plan, we had principles, goals, strategies, action items. So we're trying to really simplify it to goals and then strategic focus areas. And then again, picking out what are the cream of the crop, the top priorities in each strategic focus area, which ultimately goes down to the action items. And again, I'll note, we, we've added climate adaptation and a specific focus on municipal services. So staffing, technology, communication and coordination. Because again, I think we found out that in the last plan, the items that had staff specifically assigned to items as opposed to a committee or board. As you might imagine, it's easier to make progress on those things. So we want to make sure that we have, that we did assign a staff person in this plan, but also being able to identify, do we actually have the capacity to follow through on these things? Next slide, please. So back to monitoring and implementation, the strategic planning committees come up with a strategy that really allows them to interact with the department heads and the staff through what we're starting at quarterly one-on-one meetings. And to the committee's credit, they don't want this to be burdensome to the staff. And that was a problem with the earlier plan, the last plan was like trying to track down and get data and get reports on progress. It was cumbersome. So the committee is really taking it upon itself to form a way of having very streamlined, concise way to interact with staff. And really the committee members will be meeting and doing the reporting. So really the goal is to not have a, have this be an easy way for staff to provide feedback. And, and, and the, and the reports will come forth from the, from the committee members themselves. An ongoing role that we foresee for the committee is to, you know, be able to be a group that can provide regular updates, again, utilizing these quarterly updates to the town manager, to the select board, providing advisory capacity to the select board on new opportunities, new initiatives, not everything. There's going to be things that pop up that aren't in the plan. An opportunity to buy a piece of property or who knows what. This committee can be a resource for the select board. Should we, should we do this even though it's not in the plan or how does it fit in the plan and so forth? And I think on a similar note, providing comments as pertinent, you know, as part of town meeting warrant process, especially where they obviously overlap, issues overlap with things in the plan. So that's an outline. I want to turn it over to Jackie Aurora. I've, I asked Jackie to really look into like, how do we do this monitoring piece? And she's done a great job at building a little app that we can use that, that'll be really for the community to use and might expand into a more public-facing piece. And I'll turn it over to Jackie to explain what she.
Welcome.
Thanks. So what we've done is we've built an interactive dashboard that comprises all currently 116 action items that are listed in our strategic plan. 116.
Only 116.
Items.
Mary's going to add a few more though.
There might be a handful more. And what's wonderful about an interactive dashboard is that we can grow it, we can move it, we can shift it as needed. This is going to help the committee and their work with the staff. You know, one of the things in these long-range planning efforts is what happens to all the information we're collecting over those five years? And so what the dashboard is going to enable is for the committee members to include their notes after meetings, to update things like, is this in progress? Is this complete? There's already a few marked complete on there, believe it or not. So that at any time, the committee staff members can go back and check, where are we? What else do we need to know? Where else are we connecting with this? Who needs to be part of the next conversation? Move to the next slide, please, Erica. Maybe we're rich. Thank you. So this is just a quick snapshot of what it will look like, where every action item is connected to its goal, its strategic focus. The staff members who are involved, the committee liaison who's involved, timeframes. You need a big screen to look at this whole thing to see what funding sources are attached to it, what other plans is this attached to? But the idea here is really to link up implementation with the everyday conversations that are happening. So we're not losing track in emails and spreadsheet versions. It's all going to be in one place. Thank you. And then sort of looking down the road a little bit with this, I think the other thing that's great about having a dashboard, a tool that we can look to is to think about accountability and visibility. You know, when we really get going into the meat of the plan, we want to be able to put out well-informed reports. So this is going to give us the opportunity to pretty easily pull data at any given time on where we stand in the plan with any particular goal, with any particular cross-integration of other plans. This will also be a tool that the staff can use when they are preparing progress reports or when they are preparing for grants and they need to be able to go back and say, what have we done in the last three years? That's going to tell the state, yeah, we really deserve this money. So we're hoping that that data can live there and be very easy for the staff to access. Looking toward public accountability and transparency, I will say this is not yet a public-facing tool. There's lots of great public interactive tools. This is not yet one of them. It's not the intention, but it does have the ability to inform public transparency through reports and data collection or another tool down the road. So this is really the first stage of that with opportunity for growth. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we're nearly at the end of this update. I included a draft version in your packet. Kayla is working on a final kind of nicely formatted version, which will be the public-facing document. It'll be similar to what you're used to seeing at the back of the town meeting warrant where it's more, you know, visually attractive. So we'll have a very nice front-end plan to present and then we'll keep working on these dashboard apps. And that might evolve, as Jackie said, into something more interactive. But as soon as we get that final layout, we'll send that to the board and that'll be kind of the official, the official plan. As you can see, we've had a number of meetings, updates to various boards and committees. We've had public information sessions, public comment. We have received, we did receive some comments from the public and some really great feedback from the climate action committee, which so some changes were incorporated into that plan. Where, and where we are tonight is really just final presentation of, of the plan and looking for feedback. This has been set up, going back to the original plan, is really just a, a select board endorsement, not going fully to town meeting, but being endorsed by the select board. And once that's finished, we will launch into implementation and monitoring. The strategic planning committee, as I mentioned, will start setting up times to meet and start tracking and building out that dashboard and going from there.
So, Paul, so tonight, are you looking for? You have the term adoption. Are you looking for adoption from us or at least whether we like where this is going? What, what are you looking, are you looking for anything from the select board tonight?
At minimum, any feedback, you know, but I've given you the draft plan, the content.
Right.
There, so really it's there. Again, we'll have a, a better looking final, but what you've been provided is really the content. So if the board felt comfortable endorsing the content of the plan, and again, understanding that it's going to change, you know, it might change tomorrow. We're going to be swapping in and out of action, action items, but that's going, that's going to be the, the role of the strategic planning committee so that there is a process to this and sort of a documentation so you know what the changes are over time. So it's iterative, iterative.
So are you looking, would you like us to, would you like us to try and say, we adopt this? Or would you like us to say, we like the way this is going and keep going? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what you.
If the board.
Might like us to, to do or not do tonight.
If the board's comfortable endorsing the plan as is.
It's time to adopt. Jackie tells me it's time to adopt. Okay. Thank you. It's all right, Paul. Meanders along, okay, yeah. I went over your head, Paul, sorry. Amy, Amy then Bob.
Yeah, I really, I really like your new approach. I think that's really great to have, have eyes on it from the committee on a regular basis to make sure things are happening without taxing staff too much. I think it's, yeah, it's brilliant. I think that's, that's definitely the way to go. All the guideline, you know, the, the are the general guidelines? Is that the guiding principles? Thank you.
Yeah.
Could think of the, the term. No, I think you're definitely on the right track and I think it looks great. So look forward to seeing the final plan soon.
Bob?
I just piggyback on that. The, I think the great, great feature is the integration with other plans, cross-referencing. And I'm wondering, and I can see some examples of that in the collateral we have. Is anybody specifically going back into those other plans? Because it's tough to do, you know, go, go through whatever 100-page plan and pick out the top five things. How is that working?
Yeah, so I, I'll give you two things. So for a plan that's newly adopted or will be, so when the climate action plan is finalized, the process would be that that group will come to the strategic plan and we'll have a discussion. What are the top things that should be kind of added into? And some of those are just going to be obvious, logical, you got to do these things first. You know, other, other ones might be competing priorities. You could do one or the other, what, which one should go into the plan? So that's, the system's kind of built so that we have that discussion and we're hearing from the committee and the staff.
That's when there's a new.
For a new, yeah.
Plan. What about the harbor plan?
The harbor plan, yeah.
Sitting there for four, four or five years.
Again, that's really at, so we, we've gone through, that was the work that's been done at the staff level is trying to, what are the things? A lot of the things, we, these things we're already working on, we know, and so we're kind of committed to that. We're already working on certain upgrades for infrastructure. So those are the things that are in the plan. And once those are completed, that's where the vetting process comes through with the reports and meeting with the committee to say, okay, these, these things can, they're done. They can come off the plan. And then what's the next logical thing from that harbor plan? We did, we did recommendation, recommendation one from the harbor plan. What's in that other plan that is the next logical thing to follow up? And that's, and that's good. That's the interaction, the touching base with the committee and staff and boards.
So you're saying that the strategic planning committee is, is looking through all of those plans, trying to glean some of that information?
Well, I say it's more on the, on the staff level.
Okay.
Like for instance, on the harbor plan, Shayna, we've integrated a lot of the harbor planning elements into wastewater because stormwater gets us USDA money. So, and, and there's a lot of stormwater elements to redoing all the landings. So we do have three projects moving forward that.
That's perfect. I just want to know, there is a process for.
There is, and I think it's the committee, but it's also, you know, having those staff liaisons to their plans, their committees, their, that really does drive it a lot. I mean, it really helps us stay on some kind of.
The other, the other comment I wanted to make was, but first of all, I think what you're doing is fantastic. What I would, what I really liked a couple of years ago is when we, on the town meeting, I think we had a connection between the strategic plan and all the articles. And I thought that was extremely effective.
Yeah, really was. Yeah. Like there was a recommendation, we just didn't have time to do it this year, but there was a recommendation from the finance committee and the strategic planning committee on the, the articles that really made sense to, to have recommendations.
It's almost the best way to communicate what the strategic plan is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I think just to add on to having these sub-plans embedded into the plan is a key piece of how we figure out which ones, which things to do first. So what we're trying to identify in the plan is that there might be a, might be a town landing infrastructure project. It might be just a one-off, but there's other projects that if we do this infrastructure project, it's going to be a stormwater. It's going to be a wastewater. It's going to be a, and so everything in the plan is important. It all has merit, but we got it within the plan itself, we got our priorities, which one goes first. So try and, that's how we're going to use like, do this project first because it's going to check four boxes in four different categories as opposed to a project which is important, but it only checks one. And that's how we, which grant do we go for first for which project? And that's, that was one of the approaches to try to have all these things nested in the overall plan. Thanks.
Well, I guess we, I'm looking for a.
Did you have something else to say, Hope?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was back, back to your original point about town meeting is that when we kind of fought about how we would schedule ourselves as a committee, we had kind of quarterly meetings and then one extra meeting at the end of the year specifically to plan for town meeting. So, and, and the law and so.
So it's back.
So just, yeah, so absolutely, like.
All right, great. Anything else? All right, I'm, I guess I'm looking for a motion to adopt, to adopt the strategic, the draft strategic plan. Is that what, is that what we're looking for, Paul?
Just say the strategic plan, the content's there.
Okay.
You have in your.
Take draft, drop this, okay. Take draft, drop this, okay. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the strategic plan as presented in our packet.
So moved.
Which one so moved?
So moved.
Jamie so moved, it's Amy seconded. Okay, it's, it's the IEs that did it. No, yours EE, but whatever it is. Uh, okay. Any further discussions? All right, we'll have a vote. All in favor? Opposed? None? Five zero, Paul. Thank you. And thank all of you, Jackie. Thank you, thank you.
Much for doing that.
Yeah, really.
For all of that.
Because quite literally then we didn't have to. And you did such a thorough job.
Yes.
Yes, wonderful.
My thanks to the select board and to the strategic planning committee.
Thanks. All right, we really appreciate what all the committees in town do. I can tell you it's, it's amazing. It's wonderful. All right, uh, ne- next on the agenda administrative matters, strategic planning and goal setting. We want to.
We're just going to move right beyond that.
We'll pass that one. All right.
We're going to put that on next week.
Okay, the next meeting, committee resignation. David Purnell from the planning board, we need a motion to thank you. Thank you, David, for all you've done to accept.
I'm actually accepts the resignation of David Purnell from the planning board.
Second, second, any discussion?
Sorry to see him go.
Yes. All in favor? Opposed? None? Five zero. Okay, on committee appointments. Steve Rogers, the planning board alternate, Alexander Dahl, a zoning board of appeals alternate, and Steve Nunley for the planning board, moving from alternate to full, to full member.
Move that we accept the appointments.
Okay, we're second on that?
Second.
Okay, anybody, uh, further, does anybody want to say anything? I don't know if there were any interviews on.
Yeah, I did the interview for the alternate um, for Steve. He was great, enthusiastic, seems like it's going to be a good fit. And good timing.
Who else?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think it's actually Dolly, Mr. Dolly will be fine on the ZBVA. He'll be fine on the ZBVA. He'll be good.
Oh, okay. Excellent. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, proposed? None? Five zero. All right. We had the appointment, the notification on Julie's appointment to the search committee. So now we turn to the town manager's report, Jackie.
Thank you. Firstly, I forgot to add Tom McNellis to the appointment list because he is volunteering for the zoning task force. So we'll put that on for next week, but Tom, please start attending because we're really grateful and Mary is very grateful to have some strong, a strong new mind.
All right.
And then I did do a written report that's in the packet, but I just wanted to add a few things. Rich had some items. So I'm going to let him add some to my report and it's all good news.
Um, well, Tom already mentioned the green communities designation grant being complete. I just want to reemphasize that it's a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar grant, but we got two hundred and eighty thousand dollars between Cape Light Compact incentives, ever source incentives and national grid. So hundred, maybe the hundred and thirty nine thousand go a lot farther. We got four hundred thousand dollars worth of value for a hundred and thirty nine thousand. As from the state's perspective, the savings of over twenty five thousand dollars a year means that they're getting paid back for their grant to us within six years, which is a win for everybody. Tom didn't mention that members of the climate action committee have been helping us also. We're partnering with Mass DOT, Rivermore Energy, Weston Sanson uh, to evaluate and replace the charging stations at the library and out here at town hall. And so that's moving forward. We'll be getting a proposal from them soon, including ongoing maintenance associated with them. And secondly, uh, perhaps, uh, as it turns out, we're about fifty miles from the bridge and a perfect location for the federal DOT under the NEVI program for fast level one charging stations, uh, which would be an addition on the back. Uh, so that's a, an opportunity as well, as long as that funding doesn't go away.
That's excellent.
And then finally, just for you, a little bit of knowledge, we'll be coming back, a little bit of information for future consideration. We'll be coming back at some point. Uh, we have partnered with select energy, which is through power options, which is how we purchase our natural gas. Uh, but they have a program that we don't have to do all this separate procurement because they've done the procurement for us to partner with an energy company to evaluate, reevaluate our rooftop solar. You might recall several years ago, I think maybe two or three. Uh, we went through C VAC, um, but didn't get any responsive bidders. Um, but we think we might have a different opportunity through select and power options for rooftop solar, but also to reevaluate canopy uh, in the parking lot of town hall and over the transfer station. So we're back on that track.
Oh, nice.
So those are potential options and at some point, um, you'll be getting a proposal regarding that. So if you have any thoughts or feelings about any of that stuff, you'll let me know before we get too far down the road. And then finally, uh, tax bills, uh, made a little bit of trouble, uh, with the software conversion on the RTE, but we've ironed it all out and tax bills are back on track to be going out this week. And was going to start an effort on advertising our two taxpayer assistance programs, the original taxation aid committee, and then now the residential taxpayer assistance program. And we already got a couple inquiries today. So we're working on updating the website, consolidating it all into one spot and also coming up a little bit of a plan for some solicitation of contributions to each of those funds. So.
Keep your videos coming.
That's excellent. I think one of the things, uh, having worked in the legislative branch, uh, if you go up and ask for legislation, you receive it and you don't use it. Don't, don't bother going up and ask anymore. So it is great to try and push forward the residential tax assistance program because we asked for it, received it and move forward. The one other question, Rich, with the charging stations, we had back before the bankruptcy, uh, and the problem with, with our current ones, we had set up a, uh, a fee schedule or is, is that still alive? Are we eventually going to have to look at that and redo that or?
Fee schedule still exists.
It exists.
We don't have the ability on the current stations with the, you know, leaving of, uh, can't remember the name now.
The bankruptcy, yeah.
So no ability to cluck. So we went, reverted back to how we started, which is just a service we're offering.
Right.
To incentivize people to do it, but people are taking advantage of the charging stations for sure.
Okay, thanks. Any other? Suzanne?
On what Rich said or?
Yeah. Either one.
Oh. It's on Nauset Regional High School Building Project, the modules.
Modulars.
Modulars.
Mm-hmm.
Mod. Anyway, uh, I feel like at some point you, someone was like, oh, we'll be able to sell them again. And then it seems like we're having a hard time doing that.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of them and they've actually been made into a building. Right? So there was a tremendous amount of carpentry that went along with attaching the buildings. So I think when we got them, we thought that we would use them and be able to resell them and we could. There's no doubt we could. The problem is nobody wants all of them. So everyone wants one or two of them. And so disbanding them so that they can be parceled off one or two at a time would take many moons, many years, you know, they would sit there and they would be a clutter source. So what the building committee is deciding to do is demolish rather than relocate because they do have some significant issues, like they're not up to code electrical wise or whatever. They are modular. They are only temporary buildings. So there's ins and outs, but I don't think it's been totally decided yet. You know, we tried, we've still, we're, we were still trying to like, for instance, the, the town that we purchased them from had, had like thirty two of them. We really needed twenty six and we said, oh, we'll just take them all because that was the and you know, it's worked out well for us and they have been our classrooms for three years. So anyway, I know people are frustrated and it, but we're still open if someone wants to come and get them, but it's just that it's a lot. I mean, just transporting those was about hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah. And there's plumbing.
Plumbing and electrical.
Get to add plumbing, electrical, septic system. I mean, it's not minor. So. But it actually saved the building product. The reason we spent the few million dollars that we spent to purchase and create the modular classrooms as a campus, um, and do all of that was to really lessen the amount of moving around that the students and teachers had to do. Because every time in a construction project, you have to move someone from one section to another. That's another forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars and a whole week of people's time. So, um, so we were trying to eliminate some of those moves and we did, and we also were able to shorten the window. So a three year construction project is going to end hopefully at two and a half and it will be substantially complete by November and hopefully the big move will happen over Christmas break.
Okay, well, I'm glad I, because that makes me feel, that makes me feel better about it.
It, it's not, I mean, I think it is, it was an expensive thing, but it is not a waste. You know, it, it just is what it is. And if, and if there is anyone out there that needs thirty two trailers, let us know.
Who's watching our meeting right now?
You need those, Jamie, thirty two? No, it's, yes, thanks. Look, the great thing is that we expect starting in January that our children will be at a totally completed high school inside the, the new building.
And I don't want to say it without knocking on wood, but we are within budget. So, so.
And.
This is not wood. This is. Okay.
I will, I, one of the other things I wanted to point out under, in your report, you said we had a team meeting on tea time town center plaza master plan on Friday and that you plan to bring us something by the end of the year. And that seems awesome. Awesome, significant, significant, awesome, exciting. Yeah, because people have been waiting and wondering.
I know, but we promised once we had wastewater, we would move ahead and we're moving ahead. And I thought our meeting on Friday was great. We brought the whole community development, health, um, inspectional team, Rich and I. Well, it's Rachel, housing, the, the whole team was there and it was awesome. So we had a very good meeting. We're also, you know, asking for other people to look at our ideas and our, our fee ideas so that, you know, we can get examples of what other people have done, but we will have, um, some concrete ideas for you shortly.
That's excellent. I, I think the community would like it too. What are we doing with these, with tea time is what I get. Now, my answer was always, well, we have to wait for wastewater flow.
And again, we're talking about a slow phasing in. We're not talking about asking you to develop tea time in town center plaza all in one phase. We're, we're looking at a but, but I think we have a good idea and I don't want to unveil it too soon. So
Yes, no.
Just going to make you wait just a little bit longer.
In anticipation, yes. I, I, uh, all right, uh, next is new and upcoming agenda items, follow up or anything of that sort. Uh, Amy.
Uh, one thing I didn't see on there is the vessel storage. We had had that on earlier, I know, and I think it kind of dropped off last few. Talk about one, the policy and guidelines and the lottery to maybe change some things. We had, so we had some people, you know, email us with some pretty good ideas about.
I already, oh, I've, I've lost the lottery all the time. The only one I've ever won was draft lottery, but.
Well, that's, you know, a lot of people are in the same.
Same boat.
Oh, that's.
Or not.
Who's telling the jokes now?
That's good. There, there it is. All right. That's a good one.
Um, but for our new and upcoming items in November, we should probably hopefully add something from climate action that we're going to review.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so that
That's a lot. It's going to be a lot of homework.
The de-carbination.
Out there? Is, is that, is that good for November? The three Bs, right?
Because we're going to review something that the decarbonization map and.
And it's the roadmap. The roadmap has a lot of implications for a lot of other. I'm not saying that's bad. I'm just saying it's.
Do we need more than one session for it?
Perhaps, let's start with one.
We'll start with one, yeah. That's why, don't do it the last one in December since.
I mean, there's two pieces of grant, which is easier and then the whole.
Yep.
Road map, which is harder.
All right. Uh, I just wanted to shout out Erica on the bus stop.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Thank you for all.
Erica brought it home with the.
Thank you, thank you. And we'll eventually see those.
Well, it's still pending.
Well, hopefully we'll see them.
Now they've decided, I, I, I don't know if Erica wants to tell you, but they've decided they have to have a whole new structure and it has to be handicapped accessible and there's all kinds of new new elements to the structure.
But, but they're, they're doing it though.
We're talking town center plaza and.
And, uh, the superette.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, hey, I mean, it's, it's they're level with the parking lots already. So there's not, there's steps or anything.
And for right now, I think what they're, what John and Kim advised them to do is to take the CCRT A bus into town center plaza parking lot to pick up rather than stop on the highway. I think that's going to be better for a lot of reasons, at least super early. We're not promising that we're going to build that into the site plan.
But it makes.
That's safer on the street too, probably.
Yes.
All right. Uh, on to minutes, uh, Monday, August twenty second. I just had two, two corrections in the, in, in the votes. When we listed the votes, my last name is spelled incorrectly. You're missing the first A. If, in both of those, every place else it's spelled right, but not.
Mine was spelled correctly everywhere. Thank you. Got me, Jerry.
She got you. Well, that, that, that's okay. I'm just not hiding from the vote. That's all. I just want to have it right. Any other, uh, any other comments on that? Okay, do I have a most new except as a minute?
Minutes of September eighth.
Nope.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Twenty second in the, um, oh, in the. Yeah.
But they're, yeah, they're listed here with September.
The September eighth, okay. My error. September eighth as amended, right?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right. Any other business or correspondence? Yes, Suzanne?
Recreation need any more people for their Halloween event? Are they still looking for participation?
For Halloween?
For Halloween.
Absolutely. We love participation for Halloween. It's really fun.
Jerry will dress up.
It is nice. Sadly, I don't see into Oregon, but, uh,
Oh, yeah.
I had fun doing.
We dress up to give away the candy. The kids dress up. There's contests. It's really adorable.
And they, they usually try and pull a select word member to be one of the judges on the contest.
That year, Jerry.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was fine.
You.
I know. They try and do, they're all, all of them are adorable. All the kids are adorable.
Yeah. And it's just nice to see so many kids in one place. I, you know.
Remember when we did the parade?
Oh, that was the best. Yeah. During COVID, yeah, that was really great. I know. We threw, so during COVID, we drove around and threw candy out. It was cool.
All right, uh, nothing else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay, any further discussion? One thing?
No.
Thank you, all of you. Or even those who have left participating today. This was, this could have been a tremendously long meeting. It was long enough. A lot longer. Thank you. Okay, on the motion to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed? None? We are adjourned. Thank you.